Yeah, it's.
Tim dot Haag, H-A-A-G-A.
Ready? Let's get going. So, welcome everyone to the Long Range Planning Committee. From what I get, I'm ahead of schedule from last year, which is absolutely amazing because I haven't been ahead of schedule on anything this year. So, I've been trying to drink from a fire hose, so. One of the things that we try to really promote, or I'm really trying to promote, is trust here. I'm just, first time I'm gonna read through it, just so we all understand what we're here about. Trust is, first one is we're gonna trust each other, we're gonna build relationships, grounded in honesty and reliability. R, we're gonna respect each other. Everyone, every person has value and deserves to be heard. U, we're gonna unite, we're gonna stand together, understand one another, and work towards common goals. S is support each other, help each other grow, especially when challenges arise. And then T is transparency, be open, honest, while using good judgment in how we communicate. And that's kind of one of our, it is one of our norms that we talk about, so. Our motto here is one district, one mission, every student, every day, that's important when we're, when we're working through the issues that we're working through when it comes to long-range planning. And our purpose is pretty simple. We'll work collaboratively to develop recommendations that assist the Board of Trustees in guiding the long-range plans, I guess. Planning, I should say. With that, the, I put a goal, we're gonna talk about that more later, but today I just wanna kinda go through our time. So, we're gonna start at 5:30. We're gonna, part of our norms is we're gonna end at 6:30. That's, we're out. And so, we wanna start on time, and we're gonna end on time. And I, and I don't mean to interrupt anyone, but I'm gonna tell you, it's time, alright? So, I think we all respect that. If you don't know my world, I'm almost in meetings almost every minute of every day. So, just another meeting, you know, I, I wanna make it a purpose. I wanna make sure we're moving forward. Obviously, it's here at the District Office, and here are our norms. I've already went through act of trust, respect our time, stay on topic, speak one at a time, and focus on our shared goals, whatever we decide those might be. We're gonna welcome the team. So, we're gonna start off, I'll start off right quick. My name is Rusty Taylor, you guys all know who I am, I'm the Superintendent, from Arizona, still trying to learn all this. I'm just trying to figure out where I live most days than anything, guys. So, and when people start, "Oh, you gotta go over to Lancaster." I'm like, "Well, where the heck is Lancaster?" "I'm like, 41, over by 95," alright, whatever. So, I'm just trying to figure out a lot of these things. I'm catching up pretty quickly. I have a wonderful team that have definitely helped me out, got me straight, keep, point me in the right direction. But I have a lot to learn, so that's why everyone here is so important to me, is because you all, first of all, most of you have lived here for quite some time, so I appreciate that. But the other thing is, you obviously, you guys all have your own different perspectives, and that's why it's so important, okay? Well, that's me. Summer?
I'm Summer, I'm the Director for Transportation. This is my Assistant Director, Michael. He's here with me today in hopes, and, well, we both knew the routing situations. I too am new at this position, not new to this, to Idaho, been here a long time already. But, just trying to, trying to feel my way around and know what I'm supposed to be doing.
Doing a good job.
Thank you.
So, we're both drinking out of fire hoses right now.
Yep.
Jessica Rithman, Chief Fire Dance Officer.
You are the fire hose.
You are the fire hose.
Leon Hues, I'm the City Administrator for the City of Rathbones.
Mr., Leon, thank you for being here today.
Rebecca Davis, Executive Assistant.
Tim Haag, Facilities Director.
I'm Tiffany Nelson, I'm the Building Principal at Time Lake Elementary.
Jake Massey, Assistant Superintendent.
Anita Doupsec, and I don't know if I'm considered part of this anymore, it's been a while since I've been, but I, I, it looks like there's gonna be some changes, and I just, as a community member, just kinda wanted to see what was going on now.
Sure. There is a form if you wanna be a part of it, but you can, but it's open to the public, okay?
I'm Michael DeGrunder, I'm the new Assistant Transportation Director.
Stolen from Post Falls. Welcome, awesome. I, I made sure to say, thank Leon, but I just wanna thank all of you guys for your time today and for being here. So, let's talk about the Long Range Planning Committee. I want, I want you guys to know, it took me about a month to figure out what, what this committee does and, and how of its importance. So, I think I finally got down to these items, and please know they can be added to it, but I just wanted to talk about it. So, one thing we talk about is selecting members. All of you were either members on the team, or you would play a vital part in a lot of our decisions, so that's why you're at the table. Signups, this was a kind of a little bit of a pivot initially, but we have a signup form. Anyone can be a part of this team, as per the Board, just want you to know. Subcommittees are gonna be created by me, and basically those subcommittees will be to further research in small group settings, and bring those recommendations through that research back to the Long Range Planning Committee. They're basically gonna be our worker bees, and they'll, and from there, the Long Range Planning Committee would make recommendations to the Board. And again, we're not telling the Board how to do their job or anything like that, we're just gonna give them choices, that's it. And I already talked about, I select those committees. We already have a committee, we'll talk about it a little bit more. We're looking at a rezoning, and that was one leftover old business from last year, that's the only thing I saw, okay? Flip the page if you're on page, you can do it. Things that we're gonna consider, things that we'll review, that was already reviewed last year that I saw on a pretty regular basis, student enrollment for the school, numbers of schools, cities, county projects, things like that. Those are all data that hopefully all you guys are gonna bring to the table, and we can use to digest and hopefully make our, our plans. The strategic plan, which I did not know, but it does fall under this particular committee. I, if you have a link, you have the access to those plans. For right now, we're, we're not gonna worry about updating it at this point, because from what I understand, from my research, they really haven't been updated all that much. But I do want you guys to know, I think it's an important part of this, this team, and I think we're definitely gonna dive into it. But it could be where we have the subcommittee dive into that, and then we would bring it back to you guys and, and add whatever we thought we need to add, and go from there. Facilities recommendations, Tim, you're gonna play a big part in that. A little bit different from where I came from. Basically, the Superintendent, Facilities Director, the Business Manager got together, and we said, "Okay, these are our projects, it's different here." The Board gets to kinda select those projects, and, and we roll with them, and that's fun. We're talking about, we're gonna talk about possible zoning changes, if there, if that is a possibility, and the reasons why. We also look at our five-year and 10-year plan. I think Rebecca, looking at you, we're still in the process of trying to find the most current. I found an old one, the 10-year plan.
I haven't found a five-year.
Yeah. So, that's something we're gonna work on too. And one of the things, I, I was at a meeting at Coeur d'Alene today, and they, they really.
She has the five-year.
Oh, you have the five-year, of course you do. Well, I don't have it, but there you go. We're gonna get that to you. Coeur d'Alene really relies on their strategic plan. Everything is wrapped around everything they do on that strategic plan, and why wouldn't you? I mean, to some degree, I, I don't think we've used it to that degree here, but I would definitely like some feedback from the committee if that would be a good idea. And some of you guys are in the educational world. It's basically, we, we select areas, and we, we focus on those areas, and how we're gonna achieve making those areas better, how to do it, okay?
Is there a way to link in Coeur d'Alene's plan, just for reference for us?
Yeah.
When we're talking about the strategic plan, especially people, community members that wanna.
Well, I don't make, to put the cart in front of the horse. But one, one of the things that they do really well, and Jake and I have talked to, and how we'd like to proceed with that, is they've taken, what is their plan? Twenty-two pages long? It's really long. But what they've done is, they have actually made a visual, visible representation, if I can speak right now, of it. And it's, it's really a quick hitter, and that's what, I would tell you, that's what we look at. I think it's a few steps. The first part is taking the strategic plan that we have currently. Jake and I talked about going to our principals, and, and really getting some real feedback from them, and getting the, kind of our subcommittee in that sense. And then, from there, we would bring it here, and, you know, one, one more step on that. The principals would help us kinda form that visual representation, then we'd bring it here, and then we could develop it further. And, and then hopefully it'd be a quick reference guide, then 22 pages long. So, that, that's the plan there. Am I missing any items that anyone wanna throw out there? I might have forgotten, but maybe in the past? Nope? Alright, well, there you go. Student enrollment numbers, do you wanna hit that right quick, just to give you guys a little update? This is a, a form that Rebecca does, and it's a daily thing, right?
Yeah, well, I do it every Monday.
Every Monday?
Cause the data doesn't change much through the week.
So, for some of us that were here, and, well, I was here until like 11 o'clock last night, we did, we were able to approve arrays, and a lot of it had to do with, we are, our, our numbers. Come on in, have a seat. Our numbers were significantly better than our projections, which was awesome. I'm not saying that they were just totally wrong, they just grew in a place that we didn't think they were gonna grow. So, if we look at our numbers, overall, we're at 16, 16:30, is that correct, up to date?
Forty-six thirty.
Forty-six thirty.
Four, I meant fourteen, yeah, sorry. And then last year's enrollment at this time was forty-six fifteen?
Last week.
Last week. Last year was forty-six eighteen.
Oh, so I was off by two or three?
Yes.
Yeah, so. Welcome, by the way. We'll, we'll pause, and you can, that's okay, we'll pause and let you introduce yourself right quick. So, that was pretty significant. We were projecting about 200 students less than that. And if you look at it, and again, Jess can speak on this a lot better than I can, but I'm gonna throw it out there. The growth itself came from really a lot, sixth grade, middle school. They're, what, 60 or 70 more than last year? Is that right? High school had two, had, it was pretty significant, and they had some growth there. And then the projections initially, and again, Jess, please look, if I'm saying it wrong, let me know. They actually came better than what we thought they were gonna be from the, the primary school element. What we, what we thought they were gonna be. We didn't take as much of a hit as it.
Right.
So, that, that's pretty significant. Obviously, we don't have a graph at this point, we all want a nice longitudinal graph that we can look at and see growth over it. But the things that I've looked at online is a, is a C this. And I guess at this point, I'm just kinda opening it up to discussions, but first I'm gonna let our new person introduce herself.
I'm Lori Arbroe, I'm a parent of an Apple Elementary school kid and a middle school. Brand new for us, her new middle school.
Okay.
Sixth grader, and I also work for the City of Apple, so.
Okay, great. Lori, right?
Yeah, Lori.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good, good, good. Any thoughts on that? Gonna open out there. Nothing?
It's good news.
It's good news? That's right. What do you think?
It is difficult to forecast enrollment right now, just because.
Yeah, yeah, they're the eight, they're the higher.
Hang on, Jess was, you want to say seven?
Yeah, so it's just, all the models that we've done to forecast, if you look at one, three, five, 10-year models, none of them predicted where we're at this year, and that was the same case last year. We're seeing a lot more growth at secondary, we're seeing a decline in elementary. Even if you just rolled over classrooms last year, we should've been down 200 students this year. So, it's a little bit difficult for us to predict with new housing coming online, where the students are gonna come from. It looks like, for the most part, the housing that is coming online is really bringing us secondary students, and all those kinda starter families that have the younger kids. So, it just makes it a little bit more difficult to get a good pulse on where we should be forecasting our enrollment to be.
Thank you, Justin. To add to that, the options really are ever-growing for school choice for elementary-age kids. But we typically see that that's, there aren't quite as many options for, that can compete with a comprehensive high school.
Or a middle school.
Or a middle school, secondary. And so, that's one thing that we're trying to stay very aware of, and just, frankly, we, we wanna work closely with those other schools as well, just to know what's going on. Like you said, it's very difficult to predict, though.
Yeah. I heard that one of the charter schools, Hayden Canyon Charter, lost a lot of students and teachers and stuff like that, that the Lakeland School District see an increase in students because of that?
We did. I know the gentleman there, and he already threw it out, that what, the projections was, they were off by 100 at least, maybe even more. So, they had to riff employees, what, in their September, I think it was? So, he said, "Hey, look, there's some really good employees out there, we feel bad, but we just don't have the money to basically pay for them," so.
So, they, they started out with less students than they projected?
Oh, yeah, they were a hundred, under, easily.
I wouldn't say that we received all hundreds of those.
No.
Hayden Canyon is kind of in that weird spot that it's in our district, but it actually serves a quite a bit of Coeur d'Alene as well. So, I would say it was a fairly decent split between where those students landed.
And a lot of them are gonna go to other choice schools too.
Right.
They're gonna go to other charter schools, or other private schools.
Home schools.
Yeah.
Any other thoughts about, very significant data? And, and I, I know some of you don't understand, and we've got our Business Manager here. So, the way we create revenue is through a couple of different avenues, but the number, one of the number-one ways, and Jess, please, is, is through student count. So, if the, if the count's low, we lose money.
It's not just the student count, so enrollment. It's enrollment and then attendance factor. So, really, we get funded based on how many students are actually in the seats every day. And there's some minimums that they have to hit, so it makes it fun to calculate, and they're, they get even more complicated because they break it down by grade band and things like that. But, for the most part, the number of students attending school on a regular basis is how we get about 80% of our funding.
You have the attendance rates, don't you?
And when we lose in attendance last year?
We lost about $2.3 million for not having students in seats. So, even though the enrollment was there, the lack of attendance by the students that were enrolled essentially lost us around $16,000 a, a school day last year.
So, in Arizona, they, we don't have, we don't have, we don't base it off attendance. We base it off of your, after, either your kid's there or not, you know? If a kid misses, we still get paid for him, you know, so.
Coeur d'Alene, I think, lost closer to four and a half million last year.
They're a larger district than we are.
Yeah, that's, that's a significant number.
They're about double.
Rusty made a good claim when we were chatting about this the other day, that it's not like we can look at that number and ever think that we would recoup all of that. Like, there's not a district in Idaho ever that's at 100%, right? And so, this is always a game of like, what's the best that we can possibly be?
But, we're actually not doing too bad.
You gotta see these numbers, that's why I asked you to pull them up.
Yeah, so, if you go back to the beginning of the year.
That first week was great.
That was great, but we're sitting in the mid-90s all the way through.
So, just to give you an idea, where I previously at, we were in primary.
So, we're not.
Yeah, primary, if you're, if you're hitting about 93, 94, you, 95 is doing pretty exceptional. For high school, 92, 91, pretty darn good. And you can see the attendance rates right there.
And this broken down by school.
Yeah, so, I was just curious what my score was.
What is?
You've had a couple of rough weeks.
I did, well, I mean, yeah.
You've also had a couple of 99s.
But you also.
I give house points for it.
So, it's just kinda fun data for us to have.
Yeah.
And then she keeps, I, different numbers that she can calculate into her.
So, I break this down even further based on the grade balance that I was talking about, so that I can more accurately forecast what our support units are. Support units is what generates the, the dollar amounts we receive from the state, so.
Well, and the grade band, you have to understand too, like, a kindergartner is not, you don't get paid as much for a kindergartner as you get for a first, second, third grader, and then it keeps on going the way up. I mean, you get more money for the older the kid, which is interesting.
So, they give us a one to 40, so even though the state had an initiative to do all-day kindergarten, they're still funding us on a half-day model, so.
Few more thoughts on this?
It's, I'm just curious, is there a document or something that parents sign, just further identifying the financial impact to the school district from attendance? Like, it's hard to put a dollar amount to it because you don't want that to go the wrong way.
Right.
But there is a reality that that is impacting, and that is affects the funding.
Not necessarily something that we have them sign, but I know during the levy cycle, we actually spent a lot of time trying to educate. And there's, we're working on some informative posts to put out there in the newsletter, Facebook, that kinda thing, that can be shared in Class Dojo and stuff like that. That just kinda helps inform, like, why attendance is so important. And it's hard, you, you walk that fine line. You, we want children to be here because we want them to learn. We don't want it to feel like it's just about the dollars, right? We do need the dollars to run the district, and we have to run, even if children are absent, we still have to have that teacher, because it's not one classroom that's missing the kid, it's multiple classrooms, right? So, it's, it's a tricky thing, but I do think it's a very fine balance between educating and kind of that, we need your kid here.
That, on the legislative side, did they ever consider increasing that margin?
So, they did switch to enrollment-based funding during the COVID era, and that was one thing that the school districts really were disappointed, that the Governor changed his mind and went back to average daily attendance. Cause getting funded on enrollment, we were funded by the number of students that were enrolled in the district, regardless of attendance. So, we weren't penalized for attendance at that point. It was a pretty major shift and a major hit to the budget when they, and they didn't give much notice that they were switching back. It was very last minute, it's right when I started here. Yeah, so, yeah, so it's, it would be lovely if the state went back to enrollment funding, absolutely would.
I know several, I just know Elementary, we had a little post that we've set out a couple of times, and it talks about how far your child falls behind, based on number of absences. Like, we have a little grade that shows that, and then, then the second little part of the paragraph is, "And we don't get any money," but the education piece first, and then, just so they can, you know.
Yeah, just a little reminder.
Just a reminder, just, yeah, I, I know it feels like you have, you, you only had 90s absence, but this is what that looks like.
Right. And their neighboring school districts are also putting a concentrated effort into educating the community on what that looks like from an attendance perspective. Coeur d'Alene is very.
Well, they have a blitz, they have a.
Yeah, very prolific in their posting lately about that, but it's great information, and it's applicable to any district in the, in the state, really, truly.
And the flip side is, is you can also do incentive, more incentives in the school for those who get, students who get, you know, 100%.
Yep.
No absences, kind of a thing.
Well, there's something, they, they've got their house systems, which is great, cause they can earn points, as she said, for attendance and things like that. I mean, you don't need, you don't need a brand-new car, or, or a bike, or anything like that, yeah, I mean, they, they will do the work. Right, not all, but they, but they, you know, that's collectively.
We all incentivize in different ways.
Right, exactly, they have their own.
Like Spirit has the, certainly has a, the super-duper day. Super-duper day, and you never know when super-duper day is going to be, so you have to be at school every day so you don't miss the super-duper day, and super-duper day could be.
Just wanted to say.
I just like to say it. You know, you get a dance party, a glow stick dance party in the gym for, you know, 15 minutes, but the kids love it, and so they don't, they don't wanna miss it. It's her attendance, she, she does great.
And I will say, with the COVID enrollment funding, I do think there was a little bit of a shift away from that attendance incentive, and so it's trying to get those programs back online. Because we did, we didn't have to concentrate on that so much, really, the focus became not so much worrying about children in seats and just educating the children that we had. And so, it's a little bit of a shift there as well.
Just getting through it, yeah, absolutely. So, now you kinda know where we're at, in the sense of, we now know where kinda where our growth is at, and how difficult it is to project that, which is monumental, because obviously, it can put us in a good way, and, and like it did this time. Or it can put us in a bad way, you know, that's the thing. So, Jessica got a tough little job, and we all have a tough job in regards to those projections.
We always budget conservatively.
Yeah, she is, she reminds me of that all the time, you know? Now, this is where I like to look to you in regards to growth. Hayden Homes met with me and, I almost said Jake, but they weren't quite there, but we had a really good conversation about, I guess, their, their, they made it very clear that their project has been approved, and so they really didn't need the support of the school at this point. But they want the support of the school, and we want the support of them too. So, just know it was a great conversation, really good partnership. Are there any other new things that are coming our way when it comes to development? I'm sure, well, you've got, you've got your City Hall, which we're all pretty excited about, I'm pretty sure.
I'm excited about that one.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Let me just open up my map on my, my thing here, so I can kinda go through the things that I know that are happening.
What is that thing? Cause Rebecca, can you get me away from those things? I want one too.
No.
Oh, okay, sorry. Mom says no.
It's a Mac.
It's a Mac? Oh, nevermind, I don't want Mac anyway.
I love it. Alright, so.
Why, why? That's a different conversation.
It's the only Mac thing I have, it works great with my.
Stay focused, stay focused, we're running out of time.
Alright, so, so Hayden Homes is just starting up their preliminary plat, so it's going to take, they're, they've got that scheduled in ten phases.
Yep, as we told me.
So, that's averaging outs, about 50 homes per, if not quite 50 homes, I mean, there's only 440-some that'll be built, but they have more in different phases and less in others. So, anyway, they will start out on those phases and, and start building out the infrastructure. Most likely in the spring, they'll start on that. Usually, that takes a good six to nine months to do out the infrastructure, depending upon how many phases they do at once. Generally speaking, then, they won't start building a single home until late fall, maybe early spring, April, July. And then, it's six to nine months before they get a house built. So, you're probably not seeing your first house until the fall of 2027 for the school district. Okay? However, we have other subdivisions that are currently finishing up their preliminary plat, going into final plat phase. So, the South Brookshire, south of the railroad tracks is what we used to call it, it's now called Tressix. They're getting their final plat in front of the Council on December 10th.
I'm sorry, so, who is this again?
Tressix.
Tressix.
Yeah, it's a subdivision off of Meyer Road, south of the railroad tracks, on the east side.
Okay.
They will have that entire subdivision ready to start building houses.
Wow.
So, they could probably pull their first building permits anytime now after December 10th.
How many houses?
I'll have to get back to you on that one, I'm, I'm not sure. There's a six-acre park that's in there, and the housing and stuff like that, potentially goes around it. With that, currently being built is the Hollis Woods subdivision, which is basically to the west of that new subdivision. I've gone through there, it looks like it's pretty complete when you're going down Meyer Road, but there's a lot of vacant lots on the inside of it, and so they're building houses now. All their infrastructure's done.
Then, do we know, how many homes there?
I can use the numbers.
I think I have that way previous.
Okay. In the area of Thayer Farms, they've got Thayer Farms North, Thayer Farms West, a lot of those are already rolling and moving, they're not waiting for any infrastructure, they're just building houses. The other one that's in the same spot as Tressix is Settlement Mountain. Settlement Mountain is a subdivision, I think there's like 50-some homes in that one. It is off of California Drives into it, and so does Rio Grande, so that's really close to Betty Kiefer. So, there's about 50 homes in that area there. There is a.
There is, keep going, yeah.
Along Bagel Road, there was an annexation of about 20-some acres, it's kind of a internal, it's completely surrounded by the city, that was denied this summer. A new Viking Homes purchased the property, and they're gonna redo the zoning, uh, the extension on it, and do a zoning. No idea on number of houses. If it is approved, I mean, it'll be three years before they even build a home on. Meyer Meadows, this is the one that is next to City Hall, it's about. It's about twenty acres. Uh, they've got a preliminary plat, I'll get you the numbers on that one. Uh, as far as houses, it's twenty acres that they're.
In the right next to City Hall?
Yeah, it's one right next to City Hall. And, uh, so they got a preliminary plat recently. And so they're putting together some construction plans for design and all that kind of stuff, so.
Wow.
Uh, Settlement Mountain, sixty-two houses.
Okay, thanks. So, um, one of the things, obviously I, I bought my house here a year ago and things like that, but, uh, when I came here and I heard that we were shrinking and I'm seeing, wait, I'm seeing a ton of houses, how are we shrinking? You know, and stuff like that. Uh, I thought it was interesting in that sense and to, it makes a lot of sense now and I, I will see what the trends look like, that, um, these are more mature families. That they are, obviously they're making more money, uh, than our starters. And Hayden's talked about that, where a small portion of their houses were a reserve, you know, teachers, they're really trying to pump that up, not great, I think it's wonderful. Um, reserve title, I think is what, what are they, there was something.
De-restrict.
De-restrict title, that's what we call it. So I thought that was really interesting that. That's why I think the team is really important because we have all this growth. And the problem is, is how much are gonna be kids? You know, I, these homes are half mil usually and standard average, half mil. And at what point does it go down? Does it slow down? And I, I don't know about you guys, but I have looked, you know, cause I'm always looking and I'm beginning to see a trend where the, the cost is actually coming down a little bit. And I talked to Hayden about that and I said, well, what do you do about that? Because obviously you wanna sell the houses for, you know, for the value to pay for them. And they simply said, well, if that happens, then we pivot and we buy land. So, cause that means that the houses are less expensive, that means land is less expensive. So I thought that was interesting too. They're pretty confident and you would probably have more information on this. Uh, because I actually was in an area where we projected all this growth and it never came. It was a small portion and it just petered out. So do you have any projections, uh, as, as things are going, you know?
Right now, there was a lot, there was, when the price of housing skyrocketed in basically twenty and twenty-one, uh, because of the COVID issue, there was a lot of concern that we would cease to build houses, uh, just because of the sheer price of those houses. Um, but Northern Idaho has become a destination point.
It has.
Because of political concerns. And so with the conservative values that we have within this area, uh, we're seeing a lot of people leave areas that they, that do not have conservative values and they're moving to areas that do have conservative values. And Idaho is very popular for the fact that they have very conservative values. And so that's what's drawn them. And that's why we're seeing more, um, mature families, if you will.
Yeah.
More retirements of age, if you will, um, because they have equity where they're at and they don't need the, you know, bare minimum down or the, worrying about the high interest rate because their equity then buys their home and they don't have a loan. Uh, recently I heard through the Realtors Association in, in Idaho that about thirty to thirty-three percent of the purchases of homes in the Cootin County area are cash.
Cash? It's half mil. There you go, man.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. For a house in California for two.
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely. Well, and that's where I, I, two places I've read, and that's where a lot of that growth was coming from. We saw at one place that it, just a ton of California, so they'd sell their house and still put half mil in their pocket, you know? So just amazing.
The big thing that I'm concerned about and, and as a school district, you're seeing the numbers in the elementary schools, is the youth of this area cannot live in this area.
Yeah.
There's no way that they can afford to have a starter home at four hundred and fifty to five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It's just, it's just not possible.
Well, my, my son is who I'm living with right now, please don't judge. Um, you know, uh, he, he's got three kids and it's, and that's part of the deal. I moved in because I can help with the rent, you know, that was, that was why I did it. So it's, it's tight, I can tell you that right now. But yeah, anyway, well, um.
I don't know if you can answer this, cause it's kind of a Ratham city, but up off of Scarsello, there's a big dirt hill that they're plowing up. Is that, I mean, I can see down on the field that it's five acre, it looks like five acre parcel.
Yeah, all of, all of that within the county is five acres pretty much. So, uh, there's a big.
Those are not little kids coming there?
No, five acre lots, yeah. Lots themselves are what, probably three hundred, four hundred thousand dollars, right?
When they, a lot of people were concerned about how fast Ratham and Post Falls were growing and losing the prairie, uh, there was a big emphasis to, you know, uh, not build in cities. And a lot of people started buying, uh, five acre parcels. And so the people that had large lots within the county, you know, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty acres, were now subdividing this into five acre parcels, um, which eats up the land a lot faster than a six thousand to ten thousand square foot lot. And, uh, we're seeing a higher number of growth within the county, uh, landmass development than we are within the cities.
Based on the number of comment requests we get from the county, they're all pretty much five acre parcels, uh, small subdivisions. There are four houses on twenty acres, but maybe five acre. It's that five acre, one septic for five acre rule, um.
And the reason they're doing this is to slow growth or is, or is it just?
No, I think it's, uh, I think that the people that wanna move here are looking for a large lot.
And they have the money to pay.
They have the money to do it. But that, uh, what I'm saying is that there was a big conservative effort to slow down the growth within the cities because we didn't wanna eat up the prairie.
Yeah.
And so then a lot of the focus from developers was like, oh, we can do this up in the hill. Quite honestly, it doesn't look like anything's happening, right? Because it's in areas that nobody traveled to.
Yeah.
There was no roads that kind of went through this, you know, tw- four to ten, five acre lot subdivisions. They were just big lots that people have. And a lot of them didn't have anything on it except for trees.
And they don't have the covenants that, you can, you can live in your shop home for.
But my biggest concern in seeing that type of growth out in the county like that is you get a septic for five acres, septic tanks, it's never, uh, it's never, you can never assume that the septic tank will last forever. And they will fail, it's just a matter of when they will fail. And my biggest concern is that's over top of the same aquifer that everybody else drinks from. And when those start failing, then we have some more serious problems than growing subdivisions in the city.
And another big problem too is, uh, for our region of north, four one per five, but everywhere else in the state, they've gone down to one per one. And so if Panhandle or the state wanted to change those, which they, I mean, they get pressure. Um, so if that changes, that would just blow this area up even more, so.
Yeah. They, uh, state right now in the state legislative, uh, interim committee, there's an affordable housing interim committee right now. Uh, the legislators at a breakfast a little while ago said that they've got forty points that they are going to address during this next legislative session to work on affordable housing. Uh, some of those are no minimum lot size and accessory dwelling units. So sometimes the cities say, okay, in these areas, you can't have accessory dwelling units. Uh, the, the state's looking at saying every lot's available for accessory dwelling unit. And so. That, oh, sorry. Accessory dwelling unit is basically like a mother-in-law's quarters on the property. So if, if you wanna do that, um, our city's been very concerned about that because they don't want it to turn into, oh, you build a mother-in-law's quarters in the back of the house and then you use it as a rental. You know, but they're fine with it if it's mom moving in, but there's no guarantees that it'll only and always be mom.
Yeah.
And so they're really concerned about that. Um, but there's nothing that you can do once it's there, I mean.
We have these rental, that, that's gonna be, are those townhomes or where are those gonna be? Are they just apartments? Otherwise you, where does he come into Ratham?
Uh, off of forty-one, those are gonna, there's some new apartments that are going in off of Kenosha Lake Lane. Uh, they've got a bunch of apartments that are in there right now. The whole second half of that development is ready to kick off next, uh, spring. Um, that was one I forgot, um.
Two hundred and eighty, I think is what we estimated for that one.
Yep, and, uh, basically, it was very slow to fill up, but then all of a sudden like boom, and they were full. And so that's, uh.
Well, I would, you know, it might be where there was some affordability could be for the, you know, families, but they're just never gonna own.
They're all saying they're not there for.
They're two to three, uh, uh, room apartments are twenty-two hundred.
And they're getting that?
Oh, yeah.
So I would say in Athol too, I mean, we just came off of our biggest growth that we've had in thirty plus years. And that was forty-five houses, fifty houses. And they're all occupied now. Um, they're all sold for right around four hundred thousand. Um, but we have found they're almost all young families, young, I mean, like just having babies kind of a thing. So in five years, six years, I think you will start to see that. And then potentially, and I still think they're two to three years out at minimum, um, the only other subdivision that's looking would bring a hundred and seventy-six more homes for Athol. That's crazy.
Well, that's the commerce, that's honestly your area when I first got, was a lot of conversation and not one of them. You know, obviously the other ones, um, uh, you know, Garwood, yeah, Garwood. So anyway, that was the other area that's been in the conversation.
Not to mention the, the county side, that those five acre lots are all around us. They're, they're everywhere.
I probably get two to three comment requests from the county a week, I feel like.
Yeah. Well, Leon's not joking, like those, those really are hidden because the city gets crucified for every little new house or anything they see because it's so concentrated and they see it. But nobody looks at, you know, twenty-five other houses.
Go down Scarsello Lane and ask how many people have driven down Scarsello Lane in the last five years. Probably, uh.
Probably fifty-four, I think, yeah.
So, a- again, and I want to respect your time, we're almost there, but, uh, there was a few things that we started to talk about. But with that said, and kind of give you guys an idea, when we come back to the table, uh, I have a date, uh, that we'll send out. Um, those are things that you would want all of us to kind of contribute to. Uh, your own, it could be your own data, hey, look, there's billion houses behind me or in front of me or whatever, in the sense like that. Or you're, you're seeing families coming in, it, you know, just nothing, you know, you know, solid or anything in that sense, but definitely, uh, to bring that perspective would definitely help us in this. Um, so the only other, I told you, it's old, it's an old gem, uh, is the zoning change uh, for Garwood and for, uh, looking at Garwood and Timberlake. And I think it's at Twin, it's at, I'm at Twin Lakes, sorry.
Do you want action steps?
Yeah, hit the action steps. This was created by, oh gosh, I didn't bring it. Anyway, uh, we'll show it later. Um, yeah, you got that one though. So they created actions, they got, they got this close to it and then I, you guys can speak on it. It, it just stopped and, uh, and I'm not quite sure why it stopped. Um, why would you, um, why would you want a zone change? Does anyone know that?
Two kids in one school, not enough in the other.
Yep, yep, yep. So he's our old Garwood principal.
Well, my numbers again, Bill.
Yeah, yeah, and we.
They're from the town he's got, oh, that's right.
The, I mean, this has been a pretty dynamic conversation over the last few years with Garwood in particular. Um, just because, and I, and I know there's, it's hard to speak to it, but like, there, there is just a lot of growth happening in that school zone and there has been for the last five or six years. Um, you know, and so Garwood has been the largest elementary school in the Lakeland School District for a little while now. Yeah, so, so we took a good look at this with our transportation director and superintendent last year and we realized that it makes sense, at least on paper, uh, that since Garwood and Twin Lakes Elementary, which is one of our smallest elementary schools by student population, since they share a boundary, it would make sense to ship some of that population over.
Okay.
Please, yeah.
And just even some farther back history, when we made the shift, um, when did we leave the kids at John Brown? Three years ago?
Three years ago.
So three years ago, we did a, John Brown's numbers, John Brown was the smallest and it was, there was trying to utilize that space. There were some abrupt shift changes where they took kids from Garwood through the olive process and then all of a sudden they took about a hundred kids from Twin with the idea of trying to look at the long range that with the, that wasn't Brookshire, was all of that stuff was happening down there. The second phase of then changing the boundary to even out the Garwood Twins so that Garwood could absorb some of those schools.
So this was, uh, this was supposed to be, this was like phase two.
It's supposed to be part two. This was supposed to be phase two of that because we took, cause Twin used to have all of the kids out to the state line and this area right here by the library. And they all went to John Brown to try and make room for the kids that were, that we talked about from Garwood. That change coming to us the following year when we shifted everybody.
And we never.
And the following year did not happen.
Yeah.
Well, and, and there are.
A variety of reasons why.
Yeah, a variety of reasons, right? Um, one of them being the fact that we, we kind of put everything on pause to, to focus on passing the levy. Um, you know, but I, I do think that it just, it's, it's one of those things where with the growth, we just have to be open to the fact that we're always going to be at least a little bit in flux in the sense of having to examine where is our population. Um, it's gonna be shifting to where people can afford housing and, and as families kind of age out of being in the school system, it's gonna be replaced with other neighborhoods elsewhere. And so, uh, this isn't, we don't mean to push too hard on specifically the Garwood-Twin Lakes things, but always, always just wanna be.
Just motivate the people, you can't tell.
Uh, I, we just always wanna be aware of the fact that, um, we wanna utilize our buildings to the greatest extent possible. And today, Twin Lakes is underutilized.
Well, you can, thank you Jess for sharing this, I, cause I didn't have this. You wanna explain it right quick while we're looking at?
Uh, this has functional capacity, uh, for each school. So you have your design, which is your max capacity, and then you have your functional capacity, which is the space that can actually be used for classrooms, for students. Um, so you could see our functional capacity for each building compared to the enrollment that we have in each building and where the utilization is. Um, so Twin, for example, is only at seventy-seven percent of their, uh, functional capacity versus their enrollment, where Garwood's at almost a hundred percent. Um, so there's definitely some room to shift there, especially as we have the houses that are being built, uh, like North Lancaster coming online, um, there's quite a bit of housing right there that's coming. There's a lot of building over on that northern of Haiti area.
In, in Excalibur even, down further on Hayden Avenue.
Yeah. So.
So, go ahead.
That's all I have.
No, so you can see, yeah.
Just had a question, the difference between functional capacity and design.
Yep, yeah, defined.
Yeah, so that functional capacity is where we can actually put students. So design capacity includes, um.
Like my computer lab.
Your computer lab and things like that.
And my library space.
And we have repurposed those rooms in some of these schools.
We did.
Um, which is where you end up getting to a hundred and ten percent in a building because we have storage closets that have become counselors' offices and counselors' offices that have become mini classrooms and things like that. So there's definitely some shifts, um, in spaces. I do need to double check that we're pulling in the portables for Timbuktu Middle School cause I don't believe that they're being count, calculated in, so that would shift it a little bit, so.
We have only, we have the one or the two?
Uh, two, and it's the only school that has the portables.
And would you say there's also another category that's not being identified up there, which is more your comfortable operating?
That's the functional, the functional capacity is the com- the comfortable.
In Athol Elementary, when we first, when I first started coming here, I don't know, years ago, we started this, five years ago, six years ago, or whatever, Athol Elementary was hitting right around that we were at three hundred-ish or something. And every teacher from that school and parent was not, there was no comfort level in even three hundred kids at that school. So when you see four hundred, I'm just saying as a parent.
Yeah.
And, and so I asked, like, you guys are there?
Yeah, it, it, I think you asked a really good question.
There's a reality question there too, as far as what.
Yep, you know, and I, and I think Jess kind of alluded to this, like, right now included in that Garwood, ninety-seven percent, um, are a lot of non-traditional instructional spaces that have already been converted to, that we're using that as a space to instruct students. Um, you know, a couple of years, a couple of years ago, that looked like a full-on kindergarten class in a conference room.
Yeah.
You know, and, and we got through it, it worked fine, and now we were able to translate or transition out of that situation. But, um, yeah, I think, you know, we, I, I think each one of those building principles, like Tiffany has mentioned, you know, we, we probably wanna see that hover at about ninety percent, right? If there's a little bit of breathing room there, eighty-five to ninety.
And you can tell based on these numbers that we're disproportionate and how we're split currently, which is why the conversation of zoning comes up. Um, the difficult thing with zoning, sorry to take, add on to this, but the difficult conversation with zoning is people do move into areas to go to specific schools.
Yep. Yep.
And I can honestly say, there is not a single school in the Slaplin School District that is not a phenomenal school with phenomenal staff that do an amazing job, but people do get very particular about where they would like their kids to go.
Well, and I, I think that's a strength of our district, that we have principals and teachers and, and staff that really build that culture in a way where we're proud of that, that kids wanna go to school there, you know? And, and I think that's why this is a really good discussion to bring back from these subcommittees to the long-range planning so that we're not making these decisions last minute in a way that feels abrupt, but we have time and opportunity to really help these families see if this team believes that this is the best possible solution long-term, we can help them kind of understand the vision and even roll it out in, in steps whenever that's appropriate.
So again, more respect everyone's time, we're down to like eight minutes. So with that said, I'm just gonna give you a heads up. The, like I said before, we do have a subcommittee already kind of formed. We're probably gonna pull in transportation on this. And what the subcommittee will do is, I think we're gonna come up with it, not think, I know, we're gonna come up with an action plan and a recommendation, a recommendation and an action plan depending on what we'd like to do. You can see the need, we're gonna follow data and try to figure out the busway to go and share that with the long-range planning committee. And then from there, we, we have to move. If we're gonna do this, we have to do, we have to do it this year, we can't do it next year. And obviously, we don't get the final say, the board gets the final say. But if you give the board enough information, and more importantly, we get in front of it and we inform parents.
The families are involved.
Yeah, yeah, get families involved, get their feedback. More importantly, take them over to, you know, Twin Lakes and let them have a look at that and say, look, there's no downgrade here, it's our, it's our newest school, right? And, and she's making a lot of fun too, that's, it's, you know, we got to go to the house party on, on Monday.
Assembly?
Yeah, it was funny, assembly, yeah, there you go. It was a great celebration.
You made it, you made it sound like a frat house.
I know, I was gonna pull it back, but it was fun, I had, I had, it was, it was kids coming up, shaking their hand, it was, it was so much fun. But, but Garwood too.
Timberlake Middle School has
My daughter loves it, yeah, they have the house system.
Yep, yep, well, yep.
And my kids, my kids that are placed in a house in my school when they go to Timberlake Middle State, that same house, so they already have that community built in for that transition into from the lovely age of elementary into the awkward age of middle school, you have a place to, you have a place to belong. Chris and I work very tightly.
Yeah, absolutely, uh, yeah, so that's kind of look is what we're doing next. So when we come back, there's two main, and again, there's, you guys could ask for more agenda items, but there's two things, there are two areas I'd like to work, and I, I'm gonna have two subcommittees. Obviously, we have a subcommittee for the, the rezoning, and we'll bring back whatever the recommendation is and data. The other part is, I created our principals, a kind of our subcommittee, I'd like us to start digging into our strategic plan and get their feedback. And then once we kinda get their feedback, and then whatever we wanna create, and that's, it's, it's just gonna be really organic, guys, just know that. I think it's really important that we get their feedback and their input because Jake put it really well. Nine, they touched about ninety percent of staff and students, so we need to get their feedback in those changes. And then I think that we bring her back to our, our committee and see what changes we would like to make, and then I think we have a step strategic plan. And I, and they do a yearly, one of the things I really liked about Coeur d'Alene, I did it at my other school district in Benson, it was a five-year strategic plan, guys, so we're not re, we're not redoing this every, every year. We're trying to see the long-range plans. But that's the plan unless someone else feels like they want something else on there. And I promise we'll not waste your time, I promise I'll try to front load you. Rebecca's great, as, as soon as we can get whatever working documents, you'll be able to see it, she'll send it to you. On the agenda, the agenda will generally be embedded in your
Invite.
Invite, so you'll see it right in there. And please know it might change too, the nice thing about doing this to Google Docs is I can actually change it and I had to make some changes tonight. So watching our time. We got four minutes. So your homework is pretty easy. The status update, anything you guys wanna bring to the table, Jess has got an appointment, she's gotta get, that's fine. That would benefit the committee, so just anything, your own observations, could be anything, we'll share those out at the next meeting. Review the strategic plan, which is an interesting bit of reading, if you would say. Again, you don't have to rewrite it or anything like that, Tim, thank you.
Yes.
But with that said, it's, it's good to kinda have a, an update with it, and like I said before, we're just gonna get our principals on that. Next meeting for right now, tentatively, is for January fifteenth. She'll send, Rebecca will send out the invite. And when you come here, be ready to work, cause we're gonna have some things to decide. And we're gonna need your recommendations, cause the board wants, they want people's feedback, and all of you are a big part of that, okay? Anything for the, for the order? Anything else you need, data? Leanne, I want to thank you for sharing all the information and the updates, we really appreciate it. So, nothing else?
We're gonna
We're gonna, and three minutes early, or during, thank you guys, appreciate it. If you don't get a chance, Timberlake versus Lakeland tonight. At Lakeland, I'm gonna be seeing that.